I'm going to call the Springfield City Council Special Regular Session to order with roll call.
Mayor Van Gordon.
Here.
Councillor Mo.
Here.
Councillor Rodley.
Here.
Councillor Stare.
Here.
And Councillor Pishanary.
Here.
All right, you want to call the first item?
Yes, Mayor, the first item is the Springfield City Council Members and Mayor's Oath of Office, and this is Mary Bridget Smith's item.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we're here to swear in new councillors for Ward One, Michelle Weber, Ward Five, Victoria Doyle, and then for Mayor, Sean Van Gordon. So typically, we just do a really informal swearing in here. We can start with Ward One and then five, and then move to the mayor. And I brought a copy because I know it's hard to remember, so we'll go back and forth. But Councillor Weber, if you'd like to come up, we can start with that. Okay, so you can hear me okay? Is this a good angle for pictures? Okay. All right, so we'll start with Councillor Weber, as required by the Charter. Raise your right hand. As required by the Charter, repeat after me.
As required by the Charter.
I, Michelle Weber.
I, Michelle Weber.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I support.
That I support.
The Constitution and the laws of the United States and the State of Oregon.
The Constitution and laws of the United States and the State of Oregon.
And the Charter ordinances and rules of procedures for the city of Springfield.
And of the Charter ordinances and rules of procedure for the city of Springfield.
And that I will faithfully and honorably perform the duties of the office that I am about to assume.
And that I will faithfully and honorably perform the duties of the office that I am about to assume.
Congratulations. I know. All right, Councillor Doyle. Okay, you ready?
Yes.
All right, raise your right hand. As required by the Charter.
As required by the Charter.
I, Victoria Doyle.
I, Victoria Doyle.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I support.
That I support.
The Constitution and the laws of the United States and the State of Oregon.
The Constitution and laws of the United States and the State of Oregon.
And the Charter ordinances and rules of procedure for the city of Springfield.
And of the Charter ordinances and rules of procedure for the city of Springfield.
And that I will faithfully and honorably perform the duties of the office that I am about to assume.
And that I will faithfully and honorably perform the duties of the office that I am about to assume.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, you ready?
Oh, you conveniently have everybody's name there.
I do, yeah. Okay, raise your hand. As required by the Charter.
As required by the Charter.
I, Sean Van Gordon.
I, Sean Van Gordon.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution and the laws of the United States and the State of Oregon.
The Constitution and the laws of the United States and the State of Oregon.
And of the Charter ordinances and rules of procedure for the city of Springfield.
And of the Charter ordinances, rules of procedure for the city of Springfield.
And that I will faithfully and honorably perform the duties of the office that I am about to assume.
And I will faithfully and honorably perform the duties of the office that I'm about to assume.
Congratulations, Mayor.
Thank you.
No flowers for you, I guess.
Hey, see?
All right, and that's all I have for this item. Thank you.
Well, congratulations, everybody. We only had one item for the special, the special regular session, but I did want to give the new councillors a chance if they wanted to say anything or introduce the folks that joined them into the crowd so that we didn't, we got a little bit of time, so we didn't just sort of rush over because I've noticed we got a lot of folks in the crowd. Michelle, who did you bring with you?
Well, my husband was quite busy texting many of my wonderful friends who have come to witness this tonight. I have in the front row Liz Kaywood, Sid Voorhees, Terry Byer, Lee Byer. Right behind Lee, we have John Halgren, Joanne Halgren, Cindy Dustrudd, Steve Dustrudd, and my husband Bruce. And you all know Vani, she wasn't, she just is here because she's awesome.
It's good to see all of you folks. It's always good to see a city council old chamber that's full. Victoria.
Well, I came with the most important person, and my husband, who puts up with, has been putting up with my political ways for the last 21 years. And my mother Molly Hughes is actually on Zoom because she's in Seattle, so she's here watching.
Well.
Hi, Mom.
We're glad to have your mother here.
Thanks.
All right, then we are going to adjourn and go over to the Jesse May Room for our first work session in Jesse May Room since 2020. And I don't know, Neil, do you want us to stick around and take a group picture?
That would be great.
All right, so we are adjourned. Thank you so much.
It's casual.
We are all in person. I'm so excited.
And we are still on recording, so you won't hear the voice again.
Okay. And we know how sensitive the mics are, so if people are having a chatter between themselves.
They are definitely sensitive because they are for the whole room.
We will pick up whispers. Okay. So before we call this, this meeting to order, just be aware, right? That the mics are really sensitive, so whispered conversations.
I'm not even looking at you guys.
I was clearly looking at Councillor Rodley. I'm going to call a work session to order with roll call.
Mayor Van Gordon.
Here.
Councillors Weber.
Here.
Councillor Mo.
Here.
Councillor Rodley.
Here.
Councillor Stare.
Here.
Councillor Doyle.
Here.
And Councillor Pishanary. Yes, sir, thank you. All right, we have one item for the work session tonight. It's the L.A.N.A. Regional Air Protection Agency presentation. With Steve.
Thank you, everyone. Good to be here. That was the beginning.
That's okay. These are the technical difficulties that we had earlier. There you go. There is your page. Page one was your, just your cover page.
Okay, well, a way of introduction, leave it right there. Thank you. A way of introduction. My man, Dean Dietrich, the new El Rapa Director, I've been with the agency since April of 2021. And I believe it's not too long, it'll be two years. By way of introduction, my management and my, my environmental experience has taken place in three states now, with Virginia, Wyoming, and Oregon. I have a BS in civil engineering, in case you're curious. I've been a professional engineer since 1994. I have over 36 years of environmental experience with 20-plus years in air quality alone. And I joined El Rapa in April of 2021. I'd like to describe to you tonight the, what I, what the work that El Rapa does. Some of you are familiar with it, some of are new to what El Rapa does. And the services we provide to all of L.A.N.A. County and as well as city of Springfield. And the importance of increasing our air, our partnership with all of the partners that we do services for.
I apologize. It's having a moment. But you're okay.
Well, just pause there for a second, fill it when it comes up. Slide three already, so need to be on slide two. There you go. Thank you. So El Rapa is responsible for implementing the Federal Clean Air Act in L.A.N.A. County. The Clean Air Act was signed into law in 1970 with amendments happening in 1977 and 1990. The federal authority to protect and regulate air quality is passed to the state, which Oregon is, in Oregon is held by the Oregon Department of Environmental Quality. Air regulations must be at least stringent as the authority is delegated from the national to the local level. Meaning El Rapa cannot be any less strict than DEQ, and DEQ cannot be any less strict than EPA. In addition, Oregon DEQ can and has added additional regulations statewide. The Cleaner Air Oregon program is an example of more stringent regulation, and El Rapa administers the state air programs very similar to DEQ as well as Cleaner Air Oregon in L.A.N.A. County. El Rapa has been delegated state and federal authority to monitor and to regulate and protect air quality in L.A.N.A. County. El Rapa is the only local air pollution control authority in Oregon. Five regional partners founded El Rapa in 1968 to do this important work locally. Allowing complex rules and regulations to be implemented by an entity familiar with the area, its communities, and the businesses. And El Rapa's rules and regulations are closely aligned with the state rules and regulations. They should work, right? Excellent. So as El Rapa uses its authority and implements local, state, and federal rules and regulations, we also monitor air quality. Both the National Ambient Air Quality Standards, also called NACs, Criteria Pollutants, and toxics. And implement strategies and programs to protect and improve air quality. We're proud of our ambient monitoring network, which consists of eight monitoring sites and is more extensive than what DEQ could be able to provide on their own. El Rapa protects air quality by issuing permits to businesses who emit pollution above the minimums levels. El Rapa assures compliance with these permits through both announced and unannounced inspections. Source testing, complaint investigations, onsite facility emissions monitoring, and reporting to get the data from the facilities to show compliance. Our agency strives to provide good, accurate, and timely information to the public and our partners on air-related issues such as the Air Quality Index or AQI on our website that some of you are already familiar with. And finally, El Rapa enforces our rules in L.A.N.A. County to encourage and emphasize the importance of compliance, and it also levels the playing field with industry. El Rapa provides services to L.A.N.A. County as this slide and the next one will describe. El Rapa's complaint intake and detailed investigations into air quality is a service that's not provided to many Oregonians to the level of degree that L.A.N.A. County enjoys. On average, El Rapa responds to at least 95% of all complaints that are submitted. Outdoor burning or backyard burning is an important tool for rural landowners to manage overgrown vegetation. El Rapa manages the outdoor burning season to best assure smoke does not negatively impact neighbors and others. Fees collected from simple penalties are annually forwarded to L.A.N.A. County. And generally, that runs between $20,000 and $50,000 a year. More on services. Stationery, commercial, and industrial businesses in L.A.N.A. who emit air pollution above a certain level, a certain threshold, is required to receive an air permit from El Rapa. Our local permitting program is more detailed and timely than you might see elsewhere. And incidentally, there's about 40 businesses in the city of Springfield alone that have an El Rapa air permit. Our ambient monitoring network is more extensive in L.A.N.A. County because El Rapa exists. For example, our agency has leveraged a second air toxics monitor, of which is only nine in the whole state of Oregon, that would otherwise exist. So El Rapa plans to use the second air toxics monitor and periodically move it around in different places in L.A.N.A. County. With, in 2024, we plan to have that second air toxics monitor located somewhere in the city of Springfield. And we're looking at citing that right now and if for in the future. That will help us assess our progress on the Cleaner Air Oregon program because it's toxics related. El Rapa ensures the L.A.N.A. County's meeting the National Ambient Air Quality Standards for all six criteria pollutants, which I'm sure you're familiar with, particulate matter, NOx, SO2, lead, ozone, and carbon monoxide. Including in the Oak Ridge, Westford area, which has had air quality issues for quite some time, for PM especially. And I'll cover that on the next slide. So what you see here, over the years, had El Rapa has worked closely with the city of Oak Ridge and nonprofits in the community to implement programs to improve air quality in Oak Ridge. The graph on this slide illustrates the reduction of PM 2.5, which is the really small particulate matter. At five of the eight El Rapa ambient air monitoring stations that I mentioned earlier, to include the Oak Ridge area to below the EPA NACs, National Ambient Air Quality Standards limit represented by the red horizontal line, so that's the limit we're trying to stay below to be in compliance. The result is El Rapa successfully requested EPA to re-designate the Oak Ridge, Westford airshed from non-attainment to, of the federal standards, to actually into attainment status for the PM 2.5 pollutant. The timeline for the process, you know, spanned many years, even before I was even here. So I get to see the results of that labor and that effort since EPA designated the area as non-attainment, non-attainment in 2009. So from 2009 till, actually, September of 2022, it was non-attainment. But now it was, that redesignation is in attainment for the, for PM 2.5, and that's a great accomplishment by El Rapa and everybody that was involved to make that happen. And that work must continue because guess what? EPA is reviewing that standard right now, and any day now, they're going to come out with a new standard, which more than likely will be lower than it is now. In the last few years, wildfires have been, have seen a greater presence on the Oregon landscape. El Rapa is closely involved with state and federal agencies such as the Oregon Department of Environmental Quality, the L.A.N.A. County Public Health, the Oregon Health Authority, Oregon Department of Forestry, and the U.S. Forest Service, and wildfires fighters, and the National Weather Service to forecast smoke movement as well as impacts. El Rapa can and does issue air quality advisory in L.A.N.A. County to inform the public when air quality will reach unhealthy levels. And so the map on the right here is actually from a period of time when the Holiday Farm Fire was closest to us. We just recently got through the Cedar Creek Fire, which is, which was pretty devastating for the Oak Ridge, Westford area. But much of the work done in Oak Ridge to improve air quality would not have been possible without funding from the EPA in the form of targeted airshed grants or tag. El Rapa has been able to secure two tags, the first being in 2019 for $4.9 million, and the second in 2021 for $2.7 million, for a grand total of $7.6. Looking forward in time, El Rapa is preparing to maximize the agency's ability to bring federal dollars to the, to the county. We recently hired, we were in the process of hiring just a month or so ago, but we've recently hired a finance grant analyst to pursue air-related grants from sources such as the American Rescue Plan, the Inflation Reduction Act, and the Environmental Justice communities as well as over, that are overburdened by air pollution. We also want to look for ways to collaborate with our partners like the city of Springfield to seek out and apply for additional grant funding. El Rapa's service to El Rapa, to L.A.N.A. County businesses remain a key focus of agency activities. We strive to issue environmentally protective permits, air permits, to confirm, conform to existing rules and our regulations that evolve through time. Our local efforts allow El Rapa to pass a greater number of L.A.N.A. County sources through the Cleaner Air Oregon program, which is, I mentioned earlier, is relatively new state air toxics permitting program, which regulates sources based on potential health risk, which is the first time we've been able to do that. The sharing of information related to industry in L.A.N.A. County is expanded due to the agency's ability to tailor and our outreach and our, and our messaging to the needs of L.A.N.A. County's communities. So, so in order to increase funding opportunities, El Rapa is working to improve connections and relationship with our partners, such as yourself. The first annual partner meeting we had took place in August of 2022. The meeting reviewed our intergovernmental agreement, or IGA, founding El Rapa. It provided information on El Rapa's financial structure and the importance of the maintenance of effort in our ability to accomplish the work that we needed to do, that we need to do in L.A.N.A. County every day. The meeting also detailed ongoing grant efforts, public affair initiatives, and operational successes that, and, and other support services provided by El Rapa. At the bottom of the screen here, you see all those at the inaugural meeting that attended the meeting. Neil, you, the different Neil.
Neil, the different Neil. Yes. Sorry. Yeah.
Trick question. Yes. We'll look forward to seeing representatives for our 2023 meeting when we have it. As well as any other meeting that our partners want us to attend and participate in. And lastly, we, we did our website and launched it on September 15th. The upgrade was in response to a lot provided by L.A.N.A. County residents wishing for a more intuitive type of website where they can find things easier by getting direct access to important information presented in a simple and easy-to-understand format. We're excited about the website. It's only been up for three months now or so. And have already implemented a lot of the features that we got feedback on, and we ask you to visit our website and provide input. And with that, the end of my presentation. Thank you for your time and interest, and I'm interested in hearing from you and any questions you may have.
Wonderful. Steve, thanks for the presentation. So this PM 2.5 standard that we attained, is it based on carbon? Is it based on carbon emissions, or is it based on any kind of particulate matter that's in the air?
Based on particulate matter, no matter what it is in the air. It's the really small stuff, though. The PM 2.5 can get really deep into your lungs. So whether it's carbon-based or not, we're concerned about all of the pollutants.
Okay, so PM 2.5 is just how fine the particulate.
Mean spherical diameter of the particulate, of the matter itself.
Okay.
It used to be PM 10. PM 10 is another standard. It's still in place. Very good. PM ten is another standard, it's still in place, very good. And it, it's bigger. A lot of times, PM ten, you can actually see in the atmosphere a lot easier than you can see PM two point five.
Got it, okay, thanks. Cory?
I had a little bit of a different tangent. When you mentioned that you respond to complaints, what is the, there's probably a few processes. But I know we've had folks contact us about things that we've referred them to, so I'm curious what your process for responding to complaints is. And maybe in some nuances around that, like if someone was a. Came repeatedly, maybe, like how, how would you go meet with them? Is it a letter? Like, how do you all respond to complaints?
Okay, so that's a, that's a pretty big.
It's bigger than a red box.
So I'll break it little pieces first. Our process is we take, intake the complaints either by phone. But most of the time we prefer complainants to file their complaint on, on our website. Because it asks for some basic information that we have to have to do our next step, which is investigation after it's been assigned. To one of our complaint investigators, which most of the time it's one of our three inspectors. That cover the entire county. And depending on the nature of the complaint. A lot of times it's take the, outdoor burning is a very popular one at certain times of the year. So we'll have to go and the information that we received to go look at the area that has been complained about. A lot of times it's a neighbor complaining about their neighbor. So we'll go look at the piece of property and see if we see any evidence of open burning. Because the first thing we're going to check is what time of year it is, what they're burning, and if they're in compliance with open burning, open burning rules. Sometimes the complaints come in and they're anonymous. Meaning that the complainant did not want to give their name, but we had to go investigate it anyway. Which does make it harder for us to get back with those that want to know what the results are. But if you don't want to give your name, and there's some reasons that people don't want to do that. We'll still log it into our system and what our investigation has revealed, and then what. What if anything has occurred as far as from a compliance standpoint, from El Rapa's standpoint? In other words, if the open burning was not done in the right time of year, or they're burning something they shouldn't be burning. We're going to get with that landowner and give them. Depending on the nature of what's being burned, either a, a, a notice of a violation right away. Or give them a chance to explain before we go forward with any kind of compliance. Enforcement action. Then once it's to that point, you know, with all of the course related to. Compliance and enforcement, and there's different tools there to get the individual. Most of the time it ends up being a small fine may be assessed. And then it goes away unless they continue to do. Recurring incidents that are not in compliance, and then the enforcement gets escalated, either more fines and more serious. Actions. If we get repeat complainants, in other words, the same person complains a lot. Sometimes they would complain more than once in a single day. We actually logged all those complaints, but as far as investigation goes, because a lot of times the complaints may be about the same thing, but just five or six times. We may only investigate once for all of those complaints. But in the end, we're trying to get some kind of resolution and whether or not there's any substance to the complaint.
Is there, just my follow-up question, is there any difference in that, that process when you're dealing with businesses or individuals? Or is it pretty much the same, like investigate? Do you have different authority depending on whether it's somebody's backyard or a business?
The biggest difference, that's a very good question. The biggest difference is if it's with a, an industry, more than likely, they have an air permit that we can enforce against. Whereas a homeowner that's just doing something illegal in their backyard, it's not quite as severe and not as quite black and white when it comes to what the rules. Say we have to do. You're not in compliance with the permit, the permit kind of outlines what's going to happen pretty easily and what the resolution needs to be. Whereas with individual homeowners, it may be some nuances that we have to explore with them on an individual basis.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Let's be know how to explain it to people, you know, like what even will that do? So.
The permit's a contract with industry that we have, that they're going to meet our air requirements, and if they don't, there are consequences for that. Victoria?
Hi, thanks so much for the presentation, and this is my first time talking as a counselor here.
Good, how's that feel?
It's a little nerve-wracking. So my understanding is that we, we are one of your partners of the five, correct? And don't all the partners pay in to El Rapa, like they help fund?
It's an annual fee.
Okay. So then why is all of the money that you collect on, on fines going to Lain County and not coming back to the rest of the partners?
That's a question maybe, or in discussion you maybe need to have with Lain County.
Okay. They're usually always going to be money related, so.
State statute says it has to go to the county. Right now, we're working with the county, at least Joe Burney has started a, created a process or started a process. Because I asked the same thing, and it's been a bugaboo for me for years. I sit on the board, I'm currently the board chair right now. And what I saw as, okay, if there's some enforcement within the city limits, why does a county get the funding or funds from those penalties? And so that same question is being put forth through.
Trickle down from them to us.
That's if there's a bunch coming out of Oak Ridge, then they actually get their money from that, et cetera, so. Right now, the tough part is, is getting some of that, that spherical data to Lain County with that check and saying this is where it all emanated from.
It seems like if we're, if the total amount that the partners are paying is less than fifty thousand dollars, you just keep the fees. And then it's still not coming out of our budget.
Right, but that's, that's actually already, already in process, and it's a matter of finding out. How that can happen without costing more than what we're getting.
Thank you. Well, I guess my question around that would be though, are we all paying the same amount?
No, we're not.
You have any more questions, Victoria?
Yeah, well, is Cottage Grove and Oak Ridge still sharing a seat or didn't they? They have their own now, because a long time ago they used to be.
They've had for years now.
Yeah, they share.
Yeah, I just wondered if we were all paying the same amount or if it was like based on your size or whatever.
Population base also has, the CPI index kind of fluctuates from year to year, so that has an effect on what the fees are. And as a matter of fact, that's something that we're going to be discussing with the board next week.
Point you, so I'm just going to throw in some comments, you know, about Steve and about El Rapa. Steve was hired not that long ago, has actually been doing a very good job. He, we've given him a list of tasks and things that we would like to see where El Rapa should too from the past administration there. And he's following through with, with great precision. And staff have come in behind him, we've hired a finance director. And this, this really squared away and it's, and it's getting more clear and the budget's more clear instead of having some of these foggy areas. And, and we've given him a set of marching orders for this next year already. And so far, we've been really pleased with his work, and he's knowledgeable, he's. So far, we can't, anything. Hasn't been, El Rapa's done really, really well.
I appreciate that, my head's getting really big, right?
We'll shoot it down next week.
So I guess the question that I had was really around the fire response, and I know you, like. Both using technology and, or maybe where the, sort of the smoke has been hitting has been really, like, that has been an upside since the Holiday Farm Fire. El Rapa, like you guys have been the, sort of the stalwart of people understanding what is happening with air quality. When you think about all the work that's being done around Oregon, Oregon wildfires now from the county level to the state level. Like, are you guys coordinating in any way or having conversations with Salem about, well, what are those responses to those mega fires look like? Are you at the table at all?
So. Not, not necessarily with Salem, but in the last fire that we, I mentioned, the Cedar Creek Fire. The board and I actually put a letter together in support of what was going on in Oak Ridge to say, hey. Every year that we have fires like this, some of the preparedness that needs to happen to help the, the residents that are being negatively affected. We need to have things in place instead of having to create them from scratch each time. So that letter encouraged that as well as talking about. The thirty-five to forty days that Oak Ridge had to be above unhealthy air during that whole event. And said, okay, when can we have a seat at the table? As a matter of fact, it did garner a reaction from Rick Rawl, the US Forest Service within last month. And he's putting together as part of his assignment, a way to get all of the interested parties as well as El Rapa to the table to have that discussion.
And I know, I, I know under the Governor Brown's administration, I don't know if, if that position's going to stay. They have, they brought like a fire coordinator or emergency planner into the governor's office. So there might be a, a place for, if that position still is around under, under the new administration to coordinate. But like you guys getting to the table and part of the conversation, I think is really important.
And during the smoke management that was on one of my slides, El Rapa's always, always had a representative at those calls. Whether they're daily or weekly. The tough part is, we're in a slightly different role because we're not first responders. We provide data that helps the first responders what they're going to do.
Yeah, yeah, okay, that's. The other question that I, that I had is, how are, how are you linked, when you think about permitting from a business perspective, right? Like, one of the things, one of the challenges we have from an economic development side is. Is getting a clear story to businesses about what rules they need to follow. So I know you guys just redid your website. Are, is the information about what, what businesses need to follow, and maybe this is for the city staff on our, on our website, right? So like, if, if I'm a business and I touch the city website, am I automatically sort of getting pointed back to El Rapa as somebody you need, you would potentially need to talk to?
I haven't checked back to see how, how that automatic that is.
Have you taken a look at that?
And then the last question I had was really around the complaint process. So one of the things that's been sort of top of mind for me lately is really thinking about. Challenging properties that we have for a number of reasons, right? Like, and they could be air quality problems, they could be, you know, building codes, they could be any, you know, any number of things. Is there a way that, are, are you guys have? Sort of the frequent flyers that you see from an air quality perspective? Are you ha, coming back and having that conversation and sharing that information with the city staff? So that if, if those same properties are showing up for other code enforcement actions, we kind of have a broader picture of what's actually happening?
From a complaint standpoint, we have a lot of complaints about one facility and it's in your jurisdiction. And yes, we're going to tell you that right away, because a lot of times, the complainant, if they're not getting the response they want. They're going to quit coming to us and go to the city.
Right.
So we try to give, be proactive there and say, hey, here's what's coming, and here's who we're dealing with. From facilities, from a, from a facility standpoint, like I said, if we have our airport permit that we can enforce upon that. If there is, what was the second part of your question?
Um, just how are you, if you're sharing all that information with, with, with the city? Because I think sometimes people that you're having challenges with, maybe people that city departments are having challenges with, right? So it may give us a broader picture of what's actually happening in a neighborhood.
I guess the short answer is yes, but I'm trying to think of an example where we've done that outside of our regular course of business. Like from an enforcement action standpoint, all of our enforcement actions are common knowledge and available to people to see. But if we have a particular facility or individual or some property owner that is. Coming a nuisance, not only from a. Applying standpoint, but repeat offender, then yes, maybe we need to have, we don't have a, I don't think we have a mechanism that you're trying to describe that automatically makes that happen.
I don't know that needs to be automatically, but it may just need to be, you know, a place where if we're all connected a little bit to, to be able to say like, hey, if we're all chatting regularly. Hey, this, this thing keeps coming up, is it coming up on sort of your side of the fence or, or vice versa, right? Because it could happen on the city side, and then, you know, we could ask, hey, is that coming up on El Rapa's, El Rapa's radar?
There have been times where we've had people come to our board meeting and make complaints. Just to turn around and say, okay, I'm also going to make that same complaint to, in this case, city of Springfield, for example. And we've given you heads up that that's going to happen then.
Yeah, the, I think our going procedure at that point has been if it's an air quality complaint, if somebody shows up at the, at, at city council is to refer them back to El Rapa. Because you'll be our air authority.
Thank you.
I, I, I was actually going to ask a question related to that, and it would probably be to my fellow counselors here. What is the mech, mechanism that we have for enforcement of, of a violation that would normally be El Rapa's jurisdiction? I mean, do we have any? So in other words, what we, what we should do responsibly is refer them to El Rapa.
Okay.
Excellent. And then that's, if, because I'm, I don't know, people haven't asked, but why do we have El Rapa? And that's a big deal because a lot of folks think about, well, that's another layer of government. And why are we, why is this local agency being paid for by local money is when we have DEQ as a state authority that's paid to do this. And you, you people wonder about that, and I have too. And I, and you know, everybody knows me that's like, I, I don't like layers, and I would just as soon just ban El Rapa until. I started looking at what we would have to do as a city if El Rapa wasn't here. Start thinking about what the city requirements would be. The enforcement end of things, the, the measurement of things, air quality measurements, all of that that El Rapa does. The city would have to do it, we would have to hire staff to do that. And based on that, the costs that we give or the payment that we give to El Rapa is a fraction. Of what it would cost if El Rapa wasn't there, and they're providing that entire service. That DEQ would provide it, so to speak, but we would have to back in, backfill it with all that information DEQ would require of us. And it would cost us ten times more or more. That's, that's, I went in there saying, okay, I'll, I'll go on El Rapa board and I'm going to see about dumping this place. I didn't get very far at the moment, I took the time to learn about it, it's like, you know, this is a great organization to have in our area.
And there used to be three other local agencies besides El Rapa, but this is the one that's left. Besides DEQ, and remember I mentioned the eight monitoring sites, ambient monitoring sites? If it was DEQ run only, you'd be, you'd be lucky to have four of them. From an air quality monitoring standpoint. All right, any other questions? We appreciate you coming and giving us a primer on the, on what you do as an agency.
Thank you very much. Don't be strangers, right?
Thank you.
I did hear about Oak Ridge.
Very long time. We don't have anything else for the evening before we adjourn. Got a little extra time planned to make it back over to the, because we're trying out new technology for the first time. So I appreciate you guys just being over there patient and giving us plenty of time to make sure everything's working.
Anything for you, Charlie. You're an inspiration, Jamie. What adjourned?
What adjourned? Saying we need to violate.